We're good.
Are you ready? All right, call me to order if everybody can stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every right and justice for all.
Get a roll call, Madam Auditor.
Councilmember Reavis.
Here.
Councilmember Bozick.
Here.
Councilmember Brickner.
Here.
Councilmember Graham.
Here.
Councilmember Jessen.
Here.
Councilmember Sims. And Councilmember Wagner.
Here.
All right.
All right. So we welcome a new member.
Thank you.
Eric Wagner. Well, um, please feel free to ask questions.
I'm sure it's gonna happen.
Yes, as we go along, we'll try to ask questions for you a little bit, maybe extra today or the next couple meetings. So, um, Madam Honorable, we do first reading.
Notice the taxpayers of proposed additional appropriations. Notice hereby given the taxpayers of Porter County, Indiana, that the proper legal officers of Porter County, Indiana, will meet in the Porter County Government Administration Building located at 155 Indiana Avenue, Valparaiso, on March 21st, 2022, at 5:30 PM, to consider the following appropriation adjustments to county budgets for the year 2022, and to transact any further business which might come before the council general fund, Federal Prisoner DOC, medical insurance, $14,579.70, other equipment, $61,717. Accident Report Fund, $1101, $23,331.
Do I start over?
No.
You just hit a rough turn.
Okay. Firearms Training Fund, $1156, other equipment, $36,875. Inmate Processing Fund, $4911. Salaries, $1,784, FICA, $137. Medical insurance, a reduction of $21,385, and PERF, $200. Countywide CAD, 911 system, $4929, contractual, $293,594. Coroner Fatality Review Fund, $4930. Equipment other than vehicles, $600. DOT Equitable Sharing, $8117, training and ed, $3,200. Adult Community Corrections Grant, $9162. Salaries, a reduction of $1784, FICA, a reduction of $137. Medical insurance, $21,385, and PERF, a reduction of $200. Adult Probation Pre-Trial Grant, $9164. Medical insurance, a reduction of $14,579.70. Taxpayers appearing at such meetings shall have a right to be heard thereon. The appropriation adjustments is finally made will be referred to the Indiana Department of Local Government Finance. Where applicable, the DLGF will make a written determination as to the sufficiency of funds to support the appropriations made. Vicki Rovianic, Auditor at Porter County, published March 10th, 2022, in the Chesterton Tribune. And that concludes first reading.
Thank you. All right, Commissioners, Countywide CAD, 911 System Fund, there's an additional appropriation in front of you for $293,594 to contractual services. The reason appropriation needed to pay invoice. Welcome, Mr. McClure. You want to introduce the fellow right next to you?
Commissioner Biggs.
It's been a little while, Jim.
Been a while.
So glad to see you back. Let's have a little fun.
I'm fantastic to be here. So you got a new member?
Got a new member, Eric Wagner, represents the council in your neck of the woods, I believe.
Yes, he does.
So.
Welcome.
Thank you.
So what are we doing here?
Go ahead, Scott.
The additional appropriation is the proportionate share that the City of Valparaiso and the City of Portage pay for the CAD system. So that payment came in. It's obviously not budgeted, so this is money that came in from those cities that are now here to be appropriated so that we can send that proportionate share off for the CAD bill.
Perfect.
Is that what they give every year?
Yeah, this happens every year. I'll make the motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in a couple seconds. Further discussion? All right, can we get a roll call, Madam Auditor?
Councilmember Bozick.
Yes.
Councilmember Brickner.
Yes.
Councilmember Graham.
Yes.
Councilmember Jessen.
Yes.
Councilmember Wagner.
Yes.
And Councilmember Reavis.
Yes, are you sure?
I've been doing my research.
Okay, all right, all right. We're good. Thank you. We'll have a little fun, right?
Yeah.
Of course. Council meetings are always fun.
Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Have a good night, Commissioner.
Coroner. Coroner Fatality Review Fund, additional $600 to equipment other than vehicle, repair and maintenance. Reason, appropriation needed to cover fax, copy or printer maintenance fees for 2022.
I'll make the motion?
Second.
Motion is second on the floor. Discussion.
I have a question. Why was this not included in your budget?
Because I forgot to be honest, and then we didn't quite know exactly what the fees were gonna entail. So we found out that it's a quarterly fee, so I was just gonna get that taken care of this year.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Quarterly fee, so there's nothing in that line item of equipment?
No, we didn't have enough to cover it.
So the $600 is a quarterly?
No, um.
For the whole year.
It's, it'll cover the whole year. Yeah, we had enough to do the first quarter, and then we just need to finish it out, and then I'll get that taken care of.
Would you make sure to adjust that for next one?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
So this is what we do here, Eric. The $293,000 goes by, the $600, it's gonna get scrutinized heavily.
You're gonna have to deal with Jerry all night, buddy.
It looks that way.
There's a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Can we get a roll call on the additional?
Councilmember Brickner.
Yes.
Councilmember Graham.
Yes.
Councilmember Jessen.
Yes.
Councilmember Wagner.
Yes.
Councilmember Reavis.
Yes.
And Councilmember Bozick.
Yes.
Six to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Eddie.
EMA Director, Lance Bella. EMA General Fund, there's a transfer, $1,260 from other supplies to laundry and cleaning. Same thing, $1,260 from reducing subscriptions to laundry and cleaning. The reason, transfer needed to pay molly maids from August 2nd, 2021 through the end of 2022.
Did they have an increase?
No, we, we've been, well, for the past five years, my staff, we cleaned the building, and finally hired someone to do it because it was, we wanted to be able to do our own, our own responsibilities. And so we were paying it out of a different fund, and the Auditor's office said, you really need to transfer this into the proper account so that you're paying it out of the proper account. And that, that, that has, had never been activated before because we'd never had to do it. So they activated that category so that we could now pay out of that. So we're just transferring to that.
So the total cost for the year?
It's, we're paying $105 each cleaning, and so they come every two weeks, so.
So the total for the year is 20, is it the two $1,200s together?
Yes, yes.
Well, that just says through August, to the end of the year. So is that not half, or a little more? It says, transfer needed to pay molly maids from August through the end of the, oh, through the end of 2022. So that's a year and a half, I guess.
So you had to get us through.
I'd make a motion to accept.
Second.
Motion is second.
I have a question. Does the county not have people that clean facilities? And why, if we do, I would think we do, are they not doing EMA?
You know how to answer that?
Question for the Commissioners.
Can we ask Attorney McClure?
Commissioner Biggs is here. I mean, do you have an answer, Lance?
We were told they were short whenever.
Does the county not have cleaning personnel to clean buildings? That they go to the buildings and clean? Why is even EMA having to hire molly maids to clean their building?
It is. Also.
Can I talk to Lance about this last week, Lance?
Yes.
I would draw my motion.
Second with draws as well.
Well, the first and second with draws, but it looks like we still may have an outstanding bill to pay.
We do.
We do?
It says.
Yeah, we'll have, we'll have one more bill coming. Well, and then the other issue is till we work it out, getting my building cleaned, or I'm gonna go right back to cleaning toilets like I have for the last five years.
He's got, he's got some bills to pay.
I think that's, yeah, the bills I understand, but just to clarify, I think there are other facilities that are doing their own cleaning also.
There are.
Right. So, you know, I just, I was curious too as to why we were going out and buying us, purchasing services for this.
Because I can't get my building clean. So we finally hired somebody, so.
Who, who was cleaning your building? Was it you that are on the payroll, or your volunteers?
This is the first I've ever seen.
Well, all, myself, the deputy, I mean, the volunteers come in. I don't feel, they do an awful lot of training and working on equipment. I don't feel it's right to treat them as janitors.
I wasn't saying.
Yeah, no, and I don't mean that, that you are. I don't know prior to me coming, from the way the building looked, I don't think anybody ever cleaned it. But when we got there, we, you know, said, we're gonna keep this place clean. And so up till recently, we clean it. So, you know, I'm mopping floors, scrubbing toilets, and I'm not above doing that, but I don't know that you want to be paying me to do that instead of my other responsibilities, so.
I think it'd be important to find out, because I'm not familiar enough with it, what, what buildings, facilities does take care of and doesn't, and for what reason? And if, if the facilities can't do it for some reason, then I don't, we certainly don't want you or your people doing the, the deep cleaning of the building. I mean, surely we can take care of that, I would like to think.
I'd just like to add, I do know juvenile probation does their own cleaning, because they told me that.
They do it themselves, or they outsource it?
That's what they told me.
Council, I think, I think what we have here is a combination of, one is poor communication. If you remember, this is the building that was built with, with donated dollars. Sets the outskirts and whatever else we have right here. And I know that Lance has had conversations with the facilities director about cleaning. And to answer your question, if the buildings are owned by county government, the facilities department should be cleaning. Any discussion?
Right, so Sylvia, you're saying that's not happening, based on what you heard? So we just need to figure out who's doing what and fix it.
Lance, do you owe molly maids anything now?
I believe we have one more bill to pay. I could check with Ellen to see when that comes in, so.
We're not under contract, right?
Like, no, no, it's just month to month, so. That was something we checked on way ahead.
I'll make a motion that we pay for the molly maids for the month. That, that's it. If we owe, if we owe a bill, you say there's a bill coming?
I believe there's one more bill coming.
Wouldn't we have to know an amount to make that transfer approval now? Because we'd have to transfer, right? Or do we, can we do it?
Right, it'd be 210.
That's it?
Yeah.
Plus another bill or no?
No, that'd be a 210.
We could transfer him out. I mean, we could transfer $1,260 over, and he's within his budget, and which allows him to maybe pay off and give time to fix whatever's going on. You know?
Sounds good.
Well. That number? I'm okay with that, I'm just saying.
Yeah, that sounds good to me, and then we'll find out about the facilities taking over the cleaning, because it's point forward. Yeah, and if not.
That $1,260 is going to cover what? Till?
Not sure specifically. I mean, but maybe whatever past bills he has, and then give a little time to clean until, you know, Commissioner Biggs dives in.
So then, other facility, other?
He could always make a transfer back if he doesn't need it, or.
I just learned, evidently this is not, I'm talking to Jerry, that molly maids also cleans all three highway routes. This is the way it's always been. So, I mean, that's news to me. I was under the impression that facilities would take care of it.
Well, let's transfer the money now, and that'll allow Commissioner Biggs to work with the other Commissioners and yourself, and maybe the Highway Department to rectify that, or continue down that path.
Okay.
Does that make sense, or?
Yeah, we'll, yeah, we'll, we'll have a discussion with facilities. I mean, maybe in the long run, much less expensive to just continue with molly maids and do this to hire, which I'm sure that's what we're in here.
Right.
You don't have enough help. We'll have those discussions, we'll come back to the council.
That price, incidentally, includes all the cleaning supplies. They bring their own vacuum, and so it's nice that everything's included.
I'd make a motion to transfer $1,260 over from other supplies to laundry and cleaning, just the one.
The motion on the floor to?
Second.
Motion is second on the floor to transfer $1,260 from other supplies to laundry and cleaning?
That was my motion, yes.
Motion is second on that. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Looks like maybe the Commissioners have a little cleaning up to do themselves.
So just to clarify, you only approved the very first transfer listed?
Correct.
Okay.
All right, Sheriff. All right.
There's always a lot of people.
Lot going on, you guys got your own page. Hello? All right, I'll just get rolling. You guys can make motions or let me keep going. Sheriff, Accident Report Fund, there's additional $23,331 to other equipment. The reason, to cover the cost of additional equipment to enhance accident reconstruction tools. Firearms Training Fund, additional $36,875 to other equipment. Reason, to cover the cost of new handguns for jail and merit officers. There's another, DOT Equitable Sharing Fund, it's an additional, $3,200 to train and education. Reason, to cover the cost of training for the funds received in 2021 from a forfeiture seizure. That's the sheriff. You want to take care of that?
I'll make a motion on all three additional.
Stop.
The motion is second on all three additional. Discussion.
What's the additional cost, equipment to enhance accident? Can you tell us what that means?
Is it additional?
Yes.
So it's a, the fair machine, the 360 machine that they use for like intersections and all that to do with 360. We now have a handheld where we can stick, we can use it for crime scenes and accident reconstruction. We can stick it in a car and basically scan the inside of a car, and it would be a 3D image for the jury if it goes to court and all that. It helps prosecution out too, so.
Further discussion on any of the additionals? All right, can we get a roll call on all three additional for the sheriff?
Councilmember Graham.
Yes.
Councilmember Jessen.
Yes.
Councilmember Wagner.
Yes.
Councilmember Reavis.
Yes.
Councilmember Bozick.
Yep.
And Councilmember Brickner.
Yes.
Six to zero.
Jail, Jail General Fund, there's a transfer of $31,200 from salaries to hourly. The reason, to cover the cost of part-time employees fulfilling various shifts of jail and court security positions. Passed with that, transfers of Form 144, zero to $40,000, $40,967 for probationary jailer. Also from zero to $41,870, temporary jailer. Inmate Processing Fee Fund, additional $1,784 of salaries. Reason, adjustment to cover the additional cost of the salaries not covered by the Adult Community Corrections Fund. An additional of $137 to FICA. Reason, adjustment to cover the additional cost of FICA not covered by the Adult Community Corrections Fund. Additional $200 to PERF. Reason, adjustment to cover the additional cost of PERF not covered by the Adult Community Corrections Fund. It's like there's a reduction of $21,385 to medical life insurance. Reason, adjustment to cover the additional cost of medical life insurance not covered by the Adult Community Corrections Fund. Form 144, zero to $1,784, caseworker. Reason, move from Adult Community Corrections Fund. Jail continued. Adult Community Corrections Fund, Community Corrections Grant Fund, reduction, $1,784 of salaries. Looks like here's the other side of it. Reason, reduction to match what was awarded for the 2020 Adult Community Corrections Fund. A reduction of $137 to FICA. Reduction to match what was awarded for the 2022 Adult Community Corrections Grant Fund. A reduction, $200 to PERF. Reduction to match what was awarded for the 2020 Adult Community Corrections Grant Fund. An additional, $21,385 to medical life insurance. Reason, adjustment to match grant fund that increased fringe benefits of 2022. There's a Form 144, $30,000 to $28,216, caseworker. Reason, reduction salary, $1,784, move to inmate processing fee. Adult, adult, looks like there's one more. Might as well include adult.
Get the last one.
Adult Probation Community Corrections Pre-Trial Grant Fund. A reduction of $14,579.70. It's medical life insurance. Reason, reduction to match what was awarded for the 2022 Adult Probation Community Corrections Pre-Trial Grant Fund. There's a lot in there.
I'll make the motion for the additionals, the transfer, as well as the Form 144s.
There's a motion on the floor.
Oh, second.
There's a second for discussion. Discuss.
Can you tell us what this means?
Yep. All of it is just taking away from the grant funds. The awards weren't given out until after budget season was completed. So now we're just going back and cleaning it up so that everything matches. For the Adult Community Corrections one, they actually did award us more money this year, but in different line items. And so we had to move it all around. On the pre-trial end, that grant, they actually reduced the total amount of money that they gave us.
Was that a big reduction?
It was, it was the insurance one, the $14,000.
So the grant, you didn't get what you thought you were going to get?
Right.
With the grant.
We've been getting the same every year. They just.
How many years have you been getting this grant?
The pre-trial grant, pre-me, so four or five years at, at minimum.
Does, have you reapplied for it at all?
It's automatic. Actually, Melanie Glombach is the one that handles that grant. So she notified me in January. We just.
Did they give a reason at all why they weren't going to give it this year?
No, ma'am.
Because usually, other departments, when they get a grant that, you know, doesn't come through, it's troubling.
Well, they've been paying for this a long time. This was awarded for years, years ago. It's been the first time that they've been maybe.
We're still getting the grant, correct? It was just reduced?
It was reduced by $14,000 for fringe benefits, is all they took away.
How much is the grant do we get? Just an estimate, is it like a?
No.
A big one?
Because we're only a part of it.
Oh.
It also goes to Melanie. I, I want to say it's $235,000?
Does Melanie, are we gonna see Melanie too? Is she taking a hit?
I thought she was here last month. Was she not?
There was changes last month.
I, I think that she did hers, and I missed the deadline.
We'll blame sheriff.
I like that.
Right?
And Sims, we're grabbing Sims too.
Nobody tell him.
Is that the grant amount?
Yes, this is the, on, this fund is just the sheriff's department, what you're seeing here. So last year, they received $242,870. That was in 2021.
So you guys are still getting quite a bit of money here. That reduction is, big reduction, but it's small in the scope of what we're getting.
That's good.
So it's this one that's shared by others?
Further discussion? Um, the jail, the transfer from salaries to hourly, just not finding the full-time help right now, so.
Yeah, we got, um, we got one guy right now, Jerry Gruet, he's full-time court security. He's, he wants to do part-time. He's already retired. Two other departments retired from us. We called him back because we were short. He agreed to come back full-time, and now he's getting to the point where he wants to do part-time. So he's, he's one of them we want to, and if we can find other people, it saves us in paying insurance and all the other good stuff. I think we're down.
Seven?
Six or seven right now in the jail.
Further discussion? If there is none, can we get a roll call on all the transfers, additionals, and the 144s?
Councilmember Jessen.
Yes.
Councilmember Wagner.
Yes.
Councilmember Reavis.
Yes.
Councilmember Bozick.
Yes.
Councilmember Brickner.
Yes.
And Councilmember Graham.
Yes.
Six to zero.
All right, I think we're halfway home with you then. Old prisoner, Department of Corrections General Fund, additional $14,579.70 to medical life insurance. Reason, adjustment needed to cover additional cost benefits not awarded in the pre-trial grant. So there's your reduction there. And then there's also an additional for $61,717 to other equipment. Reason, to cover the cost of new helmets and communication systems for Porter County SWAT team. $50,800 in radars for patrol vehicles that have not been upgraded in the last 10 years. So it haven't been upgraded in the last 10 years. Can I challenge that ticket?
They're still calibrated. It's just for piecemeal and everything together, and it's winning new ones, but you can.
Technically.
I'll make the motion on both additionals.
Can always try, right?
Second.
Motion is second on the floor.
My bad, then. Just don't get tickets.
Motion is second on the floor. Discussion.
What's the life expectancy on like a?
Helmets?
I mean, really, the helmets and?
The helmets are five years.
Ten years, is it? Should we replace every, they're like?
Five.
Every five years? Is that the goal?
Yeah, it's NJI, which I think is the national, or NIJ, National Institute of Justice, says it's five years, kind of like our vests, that you could probably go longer, but technically you can't. So since I've been chief, we haven't upgraded our vests, which has been four, or helmets, which has been four years. So we went out to STAR, and these are basically our three options. That's one of them, which is the lowest price. As you can see, that's a nine-millimeter to the helmet. It's basically clay.
It's like, that's not pretty, but now it makes sense, it's black.
That's the second one, that's wearing the helmet. That's what'll happen to your head if, that's just a nine-millimeter bullet. And the one we're asking for is this one where it's basically, there's no damage to the, bring it all, so.
What happens to the old helmets?
The old helmets are in our inventory right now, but I'm actually looking at. There's a.
Don't leave them in the Valpo.
Valpo gets these, they're on our SWAT team, chief. They're in our inventory right now, but I would like to actually look into, there's a non-for, non-for-profit for Ukraine. I won't look into giving them. But we'd probably have to come to you guys after that. Overseas, donating them.
No, I think that's an easy decision to buy the best helmets for your SWAT, right? That's, I don't know if you can put a price on that. Right, so.
Thanks.
Any further discussion? Can we get a roll call on the two additionals?
Councilmember Wagner.
Yes.
Councilmember Reavis.
Yes.
Councilmember Bozick.
Yes.
Councilmember Brickner.
Yes.
Councilmember Graham.
Yes.
And Councilmember Jessen.
Yes.
Six to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Enjoy the weather.
All right, Assessor, Reassessment Fund. Form level, Form 144, Level 3, 10 at $1,000 to 12 at $1,000. Additional not needed at this time. They have two more employees that earn their Level 3 certification. Second. Motion is second.
Was it you? Did you get to Level 3?
I've had mine for years.
I was gonna say, congratulations.
Due to COVID, they put them on Zoom, so we got to put, we've got, eight employees got it last year, which normally it takes, we usually take one class a year, two classes a year, and instead we got eight people done in a year. So, good thing, so.
There's a motion and a second on the floor. The reason, the reason says additional not needed at this time. So you don't need the additional at this time?
We don't need the additional because one of our full-time employees did not get the stipend, so the stipend was moved over for the, um, working during COVID, because she was part-time. So the money was already given, but then we didn't give it to the employee for that, the stipend. So that's covering it at this point. We probably have to.
You just changed the 144, I got you.
Yeah, so we're gonna probably come back, but.
Can you, oh, wait, I have, sorry.
We're gonna have two more employees that will get it this year.
Gotcha.
Put my hat down.
There a motion?
Yeah, in a second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? We get a roll call on the 144 change.
Councilmember Reavis.
Yes.
Councilmember Bozick.
Yes.
Councilmember Brickner.
Yes.
Councilmember Graham.
Yes.
Councilmember Jessen.
Yes.
And Councilmember Wagner.
Yes.
Six to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that concludes, we, the second reading.
Second reading. Whereas it has been determined that it is now necessary to appropriate more money than was appropriate in the annual budgets. Therefore, be it resolved by the Porter County Council of Porter County, Indiana, that for the expenses of the taxing unit, the following additional sums of money are hereby appropriated out of the funds named and for the purposes specified, subject to the laws governing the same. General fund, a total of seventy-six thousand two hundred and ninety-six dollars and seventy cents. Accident report fund, twenty-three thousand three thirty-one. Firearms training fund, thirty-six thousand eight seventy-five. Inmate processing fund, a reduction of nineteen thousand two sixty-four. Countywide CAD, nine-one-one, two hundred and ninety-three thousand five ninety-four. Coroner fatality, six hundred. DOT equitable sharing, thirty-two hundred. Adult community corrections, nineteen thousand two hundred and sixty-four. And adult probation pretrial grant reduction of fourteen thousand five hundred and seventy-nine dollars and seventy cents. And that concludes second reading.
There you have it. Get a motion?
What?
A motion approves?
Second.
Motion and second. Get a roll call and second reading?
Councilmember Bozick.
Yes.
Councilmember Brickner.
Yes.
Councilmember Graham.
Yes.
Councilmember Jessen.
Yes.
Councilmember Wagner.
Yes.
And Councilmember Rivas.
Yes.
Six to zero.
All right, so move on. So we have, uh, the citizens' appointments, the commissioners, you guys have all that in front of you. Commissioners made their appointments. We also have to figure out what we want to do with, uh, our new council member, Eric Wagner. We've got to figure out, um, if we want to move him in and remove a few of ourselves from some of these subcommittees or just attach him to one of the others. I, I can't imagine the commissioners will be too angry or anything if we add a third council member. I mean, we're still under a quorum, so, but it's up to you guys. If you guys want to, somebody wants to get off a, a board?
I wouldn't change the board makeup. I mean, you can't just add a member without having the commissioner's input, correct?
We have a commissioner here, what does he feel?
Well, he's one, but he's one of three.
I mean, it's just, I mean, there's, I mean, it's.
I would suggest we, if someone comes off of something and Mr. Wagner goes in his place. And I would suggest that's not you or me, Jeremy, because we're only on one. Everyone else is on two.
Yes, please, yeah. Were they, okay, well, that makes, all right. Okay. So then we, uh, we need to, if somebody would volunteer to maybe remove themselves from one of these boards and we can.
I would come off of, uh, one of them. I, I'd like to stay on infrastructure and facilities.
So that's.
I'd like to stay on.
So then you have the public, the COVID.
Yes.
I would, I would, uh, excuse myself from that committee as well.
Well, we just lost two, we only need one.
Well, here's what I'm gonna suggest.
Greg is, is.
She's Greg.
Where's Greg?
Yeah, where's Greg?
They're removing from everything, so.
A Mandalorian.
Sylvia, that's the county government COVID public health response. You, if I remember, you're a retired nurse.
I have a family respect issue.
So to me, it would make sense for maybe you to stay on representing this board as that.
But I'd like to be on the other one too. That's the one I want to be on.
I hear you, um.
Which one interests you?
Yeah, you interested in one? Eric, you see anything that? That one's taken.
Yeah, nonprofit and employers. No, it doesn't really matter to me.
Well, Sims isn't here, we could always.
And I heard non-pro, I heard that one's not got a lot of applications in so far, so.
Which one is Greg on?
He's on Behavioral Health and Social Services and he's on nonprofit employees.
I think he would, knowing Greg and his big interest, and I'm, I should not be speaking for Greg, but he's very strong in preventing suicide.
Keep him on the behavioral health?
Yes, I think he would, I'd very much be on that.
This is what happens when you don't show up to meetings, huh? Uh, he had a, I think his flight got changed, so he doesn't miss meetings. Uh, well.
You want me to text you?
No, don't stir him up, let him find out when he gets back. He actually already texted me a picture of the view at the beginning of a meeting.
All right, you guys want to, you guys want to add Eric's nonprofit employers?
That's a great idea.
Remove Greg, remove Greg, yeah.
Punish him for being on the beach somewhere?
Darn teachers taking their spring break.
All right, Eric, looks like you're a nonprofit and employers in place of Greg Sims. Anything else, is that, that's one. Start off slow, be on one, you want to jump on two? Is one all right with you?
I'm fine with one, but I will do two. It doesn't, it doesn't bother me at all.
It's easy to make the guy mad that's not here, now you gotta make one of these mad, so.
Well, none of, nobody wants off, that is fine. I'm gladly, gladly stick with one.
All right. For now, let's move on, but it sounds like it, um, Eric will replace, uh, Greg on the nonprofit employers. So then we got citizens' appointments. So you guys have seen that, if you guys want to look at, glance at them for a minute.
Why don't we just start off with the help one?
With the what?
The help one.
So the easy one is, uh.
There you go.
Looks like Karen Nelson.
Right.
Is our choice by default.
Why shouldn't you approve?
Second.
Well, why don't we wait, we, well, all right, let's do that way. All right, there's a motion and a second to approve Karen Nelson for the, um, the COVID public health responses. All in favor signify by saying aye.
All right.
Oppose sign, same sign. Congratulations, Karen.
And Vicki notifies him, or does Joy or who tells those people they want, where they got?
Joy will notify your appointees and then, well, I can tell you what I'm gonna do tomorrow. I will be contacting all the subcommittee members tomorrow. Separately from the notification.
Don't mess with the chairwoman, Vicki Urbannick. All right, let's move on. What's the next one? That was the easy one.
I would say easy.
Let's jump back up to, uh, maybe let's try, uh, infrastructure, that's what I got in my hand, so infrastructure.
I would nominate Curtis Stradlmeyer.
I'll second that motion.
There's a motion and a second to nominate Curtis Stradlmeyer. I'm sure I misspelled that. Take a minute to refresh yourself with these applicants. Looks like the commissioners picked James Hazard.
Portage, nice.
Are there any other nominations? Would anybody like to speak from the floor on this board that might be here, that might be one of these people? All right, any other? All right, there's a motion and a second on the floor to, um, appoint Curtis Stradlmeyer to the, uh, to the infrastructure facilities subcommittee. All in favor signify by saying aye. All right. Oppose sign, same sign. Congratulations, Curtis. Two down, halfway home. Which one next, Sylvia?
Oh, you, you grab it, whatever you have in your hand. I've got them in my hands right here.
Uh-oh, all right, here's the top one, nonprofits and employers. Eric, this is your new, new board, you got a recommendation?
Yeah. I do.
Do you really?
Yeah. Um, Rebecca Tomerlin.
All right, there's a suggestion on the floor.
I'd like to nominate or recommend Tim Cole.
Tim Cole, there's another one, looks like we're getting a little showdown here.
I'd, I'd like to recommend Matt Wilson.
All right, we got three. We're gonna have to figure it out here, aren't we?
One of the, one of the reasons I was. One of the reasons I suggested Mr. Cole was based on location. There's a lot of Valpo applicants in, on all these lists. And he was one of the few from Chesterton. Um, he had a good application and I thought it would get some representation up north. That was my thought.
I recommended Matt. He's a, a young man coming up, he's very involved in the community and he wants to get involved. I felt that he would be a good fit. He's, uh, very involved with children and 4H and I thought he'd be a good fit for us.
All right, I like it, so we got a couple. Eric, they kind of stood up for their, uh.
They did. You know, if I could, if I could pull up the application.
It's in, it's in your package.
Oh, we did get them, okay.
Yeah, you're okay. It's all right. It's all good here.
It was Tomerlin, right?
Yeah. Yeah, I don't, I mean, a lot, a lot of the applicants didn't answer the questions and, um, actually it was like the first and third questions that never got answered. But I just, this one stood out, experience in it. Been a part of the county and been trying to be involved and stood out a little bit more to me.
All right, Mr. Rivas, how do you whittle them down?
We're gonna figure that out, right? Any other ones? All right, we've got three. You guys are gonna make me vote, huh? All right, so.
Was Welsland, Tomerlin, and who was the third?
Uh, Cole.
Cole. Cole.
Looks like it's a, actually, you know, there, I think Welsland is involved in 48 stuff. Looks like Tim's, you know, a North County representative and Rebecca is a female, so it's kind of a nice mix. So I don't think we can go wrong.
I've known Tim Cole for years, I've worked, I've worked on different boards with him, he's very cooperative, he's knowledgeable. So I, you know, I will say that about him, but I would still recommend Matt Wilson.
All right, how about we, uh?
Since I'm on the board, do I break the tie?
How about we, uh?
On that committee? Cause I would, I would support Tomerlin for that seat.
Why don't we, why don't we take a vote, a roll call vote, and maybe we knock the, the last one out of the box?
Do you want to get public input like you did last?
Yeah, is, does anybody got to speak on any of these three? Or this, um, this board of these candidates? All right, let's take a roll call vote and just when your name comes up, say who you're voting for. And then, um, we'll drop the last one off. And we'll bring it down to two and we'll take another vote. Does that sound good?
Sounds fair, yeah.
All right. Madam Auditor?
Councilmember Brickner.
Tomerlin.
Councilmember Graham.
Matt Wilson.
Uh, Councilmember Jessen.
Uh, Timothy Cole.
Councilmember Wagner.
Tomerlin.
Councilmember Rivas.
I'm gonna go with Tomerlin.
And Councilmember Bozick.
Cole.
Cole. Okay, so Tomerlin has three.
What if we would have gone two, two, and two? What were you gonna do?
We're gonna go to the, the subcommittee. So who got the least amount?
Welsin.
Welsin.
Welsin's out, so let's, so we got Cole and Tomerlin. Let's take another vote.
Okay.
Well. Yeah, let's take another vote, yep.
Okay, I'm going in order. Um, Councilmember Graham.
Uh, Tomerlin.
Councilmember Jessen.
Cole.
Councilmember Wagner.
Tomerlin.
Councilmember Rivas.
Tomerlin.
Councilmember Bozick.
Cole.
And Councilmember Brickner.
Well, I mean, Tomerlin.
All right.
Okay, so Tomerlin, four votes and Cole two, so it looks like it's Tomerlin.
Eric got what he wants, he gets my seat, gets us a pick.
There we go, that was fun, all right. Now we got one more. Congratulations, Rebecca. Well, you got, you got, you got your recommendation.
Are we ready for this one?
Oh, now we're ready for this one, yeah.
This is behavioral health?
Yep, Behavioral Health and Social Services.
I'll nominate Mitch Peters.
Second.
There's a, a motion and a second to nominate Mitch Peters. So look through, right, there's, this is, this is a big batch here too of, um, applicants for the Behavioral Health and Social Services.
I'll nominate Annetta Jones.
There's a, not.
She is there.
Nomination for Annetta Jones. So you got Annetta Jones and Mitch Peters. Anybody else? Wait a minute, Eric.
I don't think I can answer that yet. I think I gotta wait a minute.
Well, I was wondering if you.
I'm gonna steal my shoe.
Liked anybody in here?
I would just share that because I'm nominating Mitch.
Yeah.
By knowing Mitch for several years, he has a passion for this. And I think would contribute greatly to this committee. So, uh, just kind of sharing with the group.
Yeah, and so I, just to echo what Councilman Brickner has said, Mitch Peters, for those of you who don't know, you know, has been a community, community person for a long period of time. Has been intimately involved with, uh, mental health and behavioral health through his work with Respite One and Respite Two, which are two, uh, successful, essentially halfway houses in the city of Alprezo. Very collaborative person who has worked with many different nonprofit organizations and social services organizations. And has a stellar reputation in that field. And he's clearly passionate about the community as well as, uh, behavioral health and mental, mental illness.
We have two, um, to me, this is a definitely. I don't want to say that any of these subcommittees are more important or less important, but, you know, this is, coming, you know, regards to COVID, mental health, behavioral, mental health, social services, this is definitely an important one. You know, and I saw, I guess I just want to make note of a few other applicants. That's all. Maybe I'll make a nomination, I don't know yet, I'm working through it right now. But, uh, there is, it would appear to be a nine-one-one dispatcher that put an application in. In addition to my firsthand experience, my career has provided, you know, and some examples, exposure to vi, you know, exposure to violent, um, emergencies, drug overdoses, and homelessness issues daily. I also have experience working with inner-city children while volunteering with the Christian ministry in Pontiac, Michigan for several years, before moving back to Porter County in 2010. There's another one, um, like a clinical psychologist in clergy. Doesn't really get a description, oh, here, in the bottom it does. Although I have recently retired, I've worked as a clinical psych, psychologist in Porter County from nineteen ninety-seven to twenty twenty-one. I served on the boards of Prevent Child Abuse Porter County, Mental Health America of Porter County, including as Chair of both organizations. I served as pastor of Garyton Covenant Church in Portage, Indiana from nineteen eighty-seven, nineteen ninety-three. I've also served in the town council of the town of Beverly. I've also served in the Town Council of the Town of Beverly Shores. That's a really good one. Here's another one, Director of Utilization Review, Mental Health Facility. I have a master's in clinical mental health counseling from Valparaiso University, have worked in the behavioral health and social service field for the last 12 years in a variety of capacities. I'm currently the Director of Utilization Management of a residential facility that assists youth and families who are severely mentally ill. Um, this name was, uh, Gober Carmen, I probably mispronounced that. The second one, um, the clinical psychologist in clergy was Craig Nordstrom, and the first one I read was Debbie Gunn. So I, I just wanted to point out a few, um, there's some really good, really good applicants here, so, um, you know, uh, I'm gonna nominate Craig Nordstrom myself, just so we can have another three-way horse race here.
Sounds good.
It was fun last time, let's do it again. So we have, uh...
I'll withdraw from Annetta Jones by nomination.
You're gonna withdraw Annetta Jones?
Yes. And I'll second Craig Nordstrom.
So then we have Mitch Peters and Craig Nordstrom?
It's a really good time to have it, you know, all the good applicants, really was a lot of good applicants.
I wanted to speak to a few of them. Does anybody have any input on, um, any public input on the, um, appointments, this appointment of the Behavioral Health and Social Services?
I did.
The third person that you were...
The third, I named, the, the first one I read off, the 911 dispatcher, was Debbie Gunn. The second person I believe I spoke of was, uh, Craig Nordstrom, the third person was Carmen Gober.
Thank you.
So, all great applicants, it looks like, um, as well as Mitch Peters, there's no doubt what he's done, what he's doing, you know?
Yeah, I, I think it's important to know, uh, to note for everyone is that, of course, we do have some great, uh, qualified candidates that have put their name into it, and we appreciate, uh, their willingness to step forward and help us out throughout, you know, through this process, um, and it's good to be in a position where we've got several to select from, and I, I just want to, uh, go through on Mitch, Mitch Peters, just to give a little bit more information, and, and I'd also like to say that we, we've had, uh, we've received these applications in advance, so we're not seeing these for the first time today, uh, just so everybody understands and appreciates that. Uh, and so in answering one of the questions, Mitch states, "I'm involved daily with the issues of addiction, mental health, and homelessness. As a public defender here in Porter County, I represent individuals in the mental health commitment proceedings, represent the participants in the mental health restoration court, and handle a criminal call which is comprised of individuals primarily suffering from addiction and mental health issues. As co-founder and board of the Respite House, I oversee the operations of two halfway houses which address the issue of substance abuse, which in most instances is co-occurring with mental health issues. Currently working on a homeless, homeless shelter project called Daybreak, a mission of Respite House. Thoroughly aware of the resources and needs within our community across Porter County in regards to services. I serve on several boards and committees in regards to these issues. Personally, I've been in recovery for decades and have over 33 years clean and sober. I'm familiar with the various nonprofits throughout the county and strongly support employers and small businesses as well."
Can I ask a question? Is his organization applying for this money?
No. That was one, that was also, for everyone's information, that was one of the stipulations that you could not be on a committee if your organization was applying for some of the ARPA money.
Well, there's no doubt we have some great applicants, and there's no doubt Mitch Peters is a great asset to this county. So, we have two, um, nominations, so can we get a, um, roll call on these two nominations? Madam Auditor?
Councilmember Justin.
Mitch Peters.
Councilmember Wagner.
Uh, Craig's.
Okay. Councilmember Rivas.
Craig.
Councilmember Bozick.
Mitchell Peters.
Councilmember Brickner.
Peters.
And councilmember Graham.
Craig.
Call it in.
Okay, so it is...
That was in your head.
So what, what happened?
Three votes for Mitch Peters and three votes for...
I went to Sims there.
Oh, alrighty, alrighty.
They're good.
I know. Put them both up. You can't do that.
We can't, by ordinance, yeah. Well...
Switch your real meaning.
What was the other person's?
Would anybody like to add any input on this one, to see if they can sway one of our minds up here?
I mean, I'm just like, I'm applying.
Sure we could pull that one back.
Oh, um, is it good? I had it, Carmen.
But if he's not, that'd be clearly his choice as an organization, right?
I guess, but I mean, $33 million, you're not applying for something?
Yeah, but our problem is we can't, even if we were to say you're not on this committee, you can't force him to apply for it, and there might be a reason he's not, I mean, they, they're getting money elsewhere, or, yeah, I, it's, that's why I asked the question, if he was applying, I would assume.
You're the chairperson of the steering committee, you have a suggestion here?
Jeremy, what were the names?
I have no opinions.
Do you have input?
No, no opinions.
Can you sway me, Sylvia, or Eric, or can you sway one of the other three on the other direction?
What's, what's her name? Who was the other person you guys voted for?
Oh, it was, um, Craig, uh, Nord, Nordstrom.
Nordstrom.
Nordstrom, so...
I'll change my vote to Craig Nordstrom, and the reason being, he's from Beverly Shores, again, we're just different areas, I mean, we've got a lot of Valpers, Valparaiso representation, and that's who applied, there was a lot more Valparaiso people that applied, but I'll change my vote based on that.
And actually, that was, that was rather disappointing, in my opinion, because out of this whole county, there wasn't hardly that many applicants, and most of them were from Valparaiso.
I don't, yeah, I mean, I don't think we can punish, you know, people that wanna be involved in Valpo, but...
And I think Mitch Peters would be great, don't get me wrong, I just, if we're looking to make a change...
So you wanna take the vote again now, or...
Well, can we, yeah, let's, let's do another roll call, would appear that maybe we have a council person that's switched, so...
I'm trying to move the situation forward, and I think they're both...
You're fine, you're fine, we got a roll call on this one, Behavioral Health and Social Services.
Uh, councilmember Wagner.
Uh, Craig.
Oh, I was gonna say, don't change it.
Uh, councilmember Rivas.
Uh, Mitch, uh, no, Craig, just kidding.
Oh, boy. Councilmember Bozick.
Uh, Craig.
Councilmember Brickner.
Peters.
Councilmember Graham.
Craig.
And councilmember Justin.
Uh, Mitch Peters.
Okay, so Craig Nordstrom has four votes, and Mitch Peters has two.
Well...
That was good.
That was good, yes. Um, some people are gonna be disappointed, no doubt, but we thank everybody who applied to sit on these boards, um, for sure, and Vicki, um, so you'll, you'll sign an email to them all, letting them know, and then Vicki, you'll work with the boards, obviously, as the chairperson for the steering base, to set up their, their meetings.
Right, as a result of the last, of the first steering committee meeting, the consensus was that they would like the subcommittees to start meeting and to stick to the timetable. So hopefully, we'll be starting to schedule those meetings soon.
So you will notify the subcommittees, seeing that you're in charge?
All right.
And maybe, and maybe just for clarification, we should at least state how many, uh, citizens we had apply for each, just to make it...
Go ahead, Mr. Justin.
Um, for the nonprofits and employers, we had a total of, and these are people that applied that could've been selected from the commissioners or the, or the council, we had a total of 13 people apply for the nonprofits and employers. We had a total of two that applied for the COVID Public Health Response Committee, total of six for infrastructure and facilities, and a total of 16 for behavioral health and social services.
Oh, I think that's great, great participation.
And would, would you concur that the majority of those were from Valparaiso?
It seemed like that was more common than not.
And that wasn't a dig on Valpo when I said that, that's just, I wish we would've seen more participation from other areas.
I didn't say you said that.
Oh, no, no, I know, I just, I know how these newspapers are, they're... I'm joking, I'm joking.
All right, any other matter that would properly come before the council?
Um, Mr. President, I would like to ask, where, do you, or does Vicki, or does Joy know where we're at with our pay study? Are we, are, are we on par to be done?
Oh, I haven't, I haven't got a follow-up, I'd have to ask, I could ask, you know, probably ask HR where it's at, I mean, last time, they were beginning to, to receive stuff back, you know, and I think they had a number of departments that were bringing stuff back, but yeah, we could, we can get an update.
So I, I would further that to ask, how are they comparing that, cause they started this pay study before inflation and all the stuff, aspects was going on, how are they taking that into account now? Are they, are we gonna have really high numbers because they're taking inflation into effect? How does, how does that work?
I, obviously, I don't work for them.
No, that's what I'm saying, when you're asking, could you ask that?
I would ask that, I mean, yeah, I think it was, I mean, it was, yeah, that's a great question, I mean, I think it was comparison, though, you know, where they're at in the market, not, you know, not negotiating what we should give them because of inflation, you know, I think...
Right, but the market changed in the middle of the study, that's my question.
Yeah, it's a good question.
And will we have it back by budget season?
Well, I think that was the whole point, it was rushing, for sure.
That's all I had, thank you, Mr. President.
Yeah, and we'll get an update on that.
This is good, this just tells you what...
Anything else?
There's a... You got a public press?
Yeah, does the public have anything that would add on, that, anything that was, uh, on the agenda that we covered? Yes, sir.
Applications for the ARPA, for the school, for the people?
Yes.
Others, you said, you have to tell the public.
I think...
You said in the period, you had, you had, you had time for something.
No, we said to go ahead and do it, put the information that you had now, and that if you need to add to it, add to it.
Get it summary.
But get it up, right, yeah.
That was kind of, yeah, our, our, our suggestion was, yes, submit something, don't, yeah, because the deadline's March 31st, so even if you, you're missing some pieces to your presentation, get as much as you can in, and when, you can kill, still build it, you know?
We're building technical information, you can't agree.
But you have to do it online, you have to submit it online.
Yeah, as much as you can, and then you can update it, yeah, for sure, just, perfect. Anybody, anything else?
One for you, Dave.
All right, is there, our next meeting, is there, where, everything's good, April, April 26th?
The others' office won't be here that day.
What, what do you mean?
What?
Is it disappearing?
Yes.
Will it be coming back?
No, it's, um, the State Board of Accounts called conference.
So these organizations, we're gonna have to have a talking to, because it seems like they always, you know, wanna put their meetings on.
Even at budget time.
Yeah.
Well, you guys are all going, or, like, Tony, I meant, you and Tony are both going?
Yeah, uh, Tony, Tiffany, and myself, because it deals with the financial reporting and settlement and abstract and all the things that we deal with.
Well, we gotta have someone here from our office, so...
So what's the Monday before?
Are you guys gone all week, or what?
Yeah, that's a good question, when are you going? Is it...
Is this a week-long girls' trip, or just...
Yeah, Lee, uh, Tuesday through Thursday.
You probably don't wanna stay sitting by him, or...
Nice.
What?
You said a week-long girls' trip?
That's, she said she was taking three ladies?
Get him, Sylvia, get him.
I was agreeing with it.
Maybe I would get an invite saying that, that's what I'm saying. Is it a week long? Is it a couple days, mostly the week?
Uh, Tuesday through Thursday.
Okay.
I'm hesitating, cause I'm on the board, so, um, I have a different responsibility.
Um...
Wednesday.
You guys wanna move it up a week to the 19th?
That's my birthday, man.
April 19th's your birthday?
Yeah, we can have a meeting on my birthday.
I'm not even sure what that means.
I'm not 40 yet, so, we're good.
Mr. Brickner?
Shut up, nineteen.
Yeah, it's fine.
Justin?
Nineteen, works.
Works. Eric, you don't get a vote yet.
Oh, okay.
So, Eric, 19th, you got anything on your schedule?
Uh, no, I'll take care of it.
So you do?
I can be here.
Are you sure?
Yeah, I had my birthday party on.
We're gonna be here, we're, Eric, he can, we can put his face in it, it's fine.
Now I'm starting to like him.
Same.
All right, well, let's schedule it for the 19th right now, so, April 19th, our next meeting. Anything else that may properly come before the council? Eric, how do we do?
Um, I think we're gonna have to work on some things, we'll get there.
Amen. He said we'll get there. We're about finding your seat next month, so...
That's how I felt.
He's done a great job, I'm, there's problems, I mean, on the council.
Got some very big shoes to fill over there, sir.
I know, and he's gonna do it.
Do my best, do my best.
So, all right, I'll, uh, entertain the motion. There's a motion to second to adjourn, all in favor, signify by saying aye. All in, same sign.
Drink.
The vote on the morning.
So we have a good Russell.